Good evening and welcome to the August 9th meeting of the regular session of City Council. If you wish to speak to Council tonight, we ask that you register in the lobby and please indicate item I if the item you wish to address tonight is not on the agenda. We have a light system on our podium. After you give your name and address, the green light will appear at the end of two minutes, the yellow light, and at the end of three minutes, the red light, and we ask that you promptly take your seat at that time. The city code identifies the procedure for citizen participation regarding items on tonight's council agenda and provides the opportunity for citizens to address City Council on matters that are germane to the business of council. Matters that are germane to the business of council means matters that the City Council by law is empowered to act upon. This does not include announcements that are personal to you, your business, or your organization, including campaign information. Copies of the city ordinance regarding citizen participation can be found at the desks in the lobby. If you intend to address council this evening, please pick up and review a copy of that ordinance. We also ask at this time if you would please silence your phones. Prior to the beginning of the business portion of the meeting, Pastor John Ware with the Lifehouse Ministries of Newport News will provide an invocation to the council. Afterwards, I will lead us in the pledge of allegiance. It is the practice of council members to stand for the invocation and the pledge of allegiance. Those who also wish to stand are welcome, but you are under no obligation to do so.
Let us pray. Lord, we pause right now to acknowledge your presence here. Before there is debate or decisions made, we put you in your rightful place as ruler, king, lord, and the ultimate authority. Thank you for being radically available to each person here. We come humbly into your presence today as brothers and sisters, colleagues, and fellow citizens to acknowledge our need for you. Today, in this moment, we know that you rise above each political issue and problem that will come up today, and you see our hearts, you hear beyond our words, and listen to our greatest desires, hopes, and needs. We don't ask that you would take our side, but we would take and submit to yours. Thank you for each man and woman that is serving our great city here today. We pray that you would fill them with supernatural wisdom and strength. May they be reminded tonight that the work they do is not in vain, and that whatever we do, if we do it for you, matters. I pray that as major and minor decisions are debated, discussed, and decided today, though there may be differences in how things should be, may there be a supernatural unity here, that although we might think differently, we would be reminded that all people are made in your image and are worthy of respect, dignity, and value. And we pray that you would fill this room, each person, with the fruit of your spirit, with love, with joy, with peace, with patience, with kindness, with gentleness, and with self-control. Grant these leaders wisdom and courage to know and do what is right, good and true. May they and we always be guided by the spirit of community, the spirit of justice, and the spirit of love. We pray all these things in your name, God. Amen.
Please repeat, recite with me the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
May I have a motion to excuse Councilwoman Scott?
So moved.
Moved in second. Call the roll, please.
Councilman Harris?
Four.
Councilman Jenkins?
Four.
Mayor Price?
Four.
Councilwoman Vick?
Four.
Councilwoman Woodbury?
Four.
Vice Mayor Cherry? Motion carried, six to zero.
We are now at public hearings, page five. Item E1 is a request to adopt an ordinance granting conditional use permit number CU 2022-004 to John Craig Kelly, trustee of the Teresa A. Kelly Living Trust, to allow for the construction and operation of a car wash facility on a combined 1.34-acre parcel located at 10907 and 109 11 Wark Boulevard, Zone C1 Retail Commercial. The applicant is proposing to construct a 3,887-square-foot tunnel car wash building with a total of 20 parking spaces, 16 of which are vacuum spaces. The proposed car wash is not consistent with the One City, One Future Comprehensive Plan land use designation of Neighborhood Commercial. On July 20, the City Planning Commission voted unanimously eight to zero to recommend denial of the conditional use permit, number CU 2022-004, to the City Council. The city manager also recommends denials. Are there any speakers? I do not see any. Is there a motion? There are? Oh, E1, there are, I'm sorry. I'm sorry, Jonathan Dozier for questions only, and Wilson Core and Nicholas Noons. Did either of you wish to speak? Good evening.
My name is Nicholas Noons, 739 Thimble Shoals Boulevard, Suite 105, Newport News, 23606. I'm speaking in favor of the proposal on behalf of Take Five. We recognize that there are headwinds facing this proposal. One of the main issues that was raised by the Planning Commission and staff was noise. Here, the vacuums that would be installed unenclosed at 30 feet would operate at 38 decibels. In the planned enclosure, the sound level would be reduced to 23 decibels at 30 feet. For reference, we look a lot of times to VDOT's noise data. VDOT likens 30 decibels to the sound levels in a library. In terms of the sound at the tunnel, the edge of the tunnel would be about 67 feet from the nearest residence. Previous studies of similar designs to the Take Five car wash that's proposed here indicate a sound level of approximately 60 decibels at that distance. For comparison, VDOT likens the sound levels of a large business office to approximately 58 decibels. Normal speech at 3 feet is about 65 decibels. Typical suburban traffic sound levels range from 50 to 65 decibels, and that, of course, depends on the amount of traffic, distance from the roadway, and the type of vehicles passing by. Take Five is proposing that they would install a sound wall as well as any other landscaping that the city might require and that could further mitigate the impacts to any noise. Previous studies by Take Five indicate that noise mitigation efforts can achieve a reduction of 6 to 10 decibels. In regards to the One City, One Future, it is Neighborhood Commercial. This site is proposed to operate from 7:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. Monday through Saturday and from 10:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. on Sunday. When open, it'd be staffed with four employees. When not open, the vacuums and the car wash would not be operational. It's expected to serve only about 50 to 100 customers per day, which means less traffic in and out than the previous use. The concept of Neighborhood Commercial is supposed to be about serving that neighborhood and not the larger community or the region as a whole. The size of this car wash and the design of this car wash is intended to serve just this local neighborhood, just about 50 to 100 people per day. In terms of its actual location, this location is the last Neighborhood Commercial block that is in that Neighborhood Commercial area, and it's directly across Wark Boulevard from the shopping center with parcels intended for community commercial and regional commercial uses. So if, to the extent that our proposed use is not ideal for the Neighborhood Commercial designation, the location is one where some leeway makes sense. It's important to note that this is at the edge of the Hilton Village and Rivermont area. Take Five is happy to address ways in which it can alter its exterior design and landscaping to better blend into the existing and historic Hilton Village and Rivermont neighborhoods. As the city knows, attracting commercial users to this corridor has been a challenge, and this current site has been vacant for the last three years. I think one of the most important things when considering this proposal is looking to the city's own 2040 Comprehensive Plan, which provides some of the best arguments why the proposal should be approved. From page 110 of that document, it states, "While Hilton Village continues to retain its historic value, the neighborhood center has experienced some decline over the past decade. This is in large part because some of the more successful businesses relocated to newer shopping centers elsewhere in the city." Goes on to state, "The Wark Boulevard corridor through the Hilton Village/Rivermont area is showing signs of decline. There are many deteriorated sites, vacant commercial spaces, and the pedestrian environment lacks a unified streetscape design and safe, accessible, and unobstructed sidewalks. Attracting investors to redevelop properties along the corridor remains a challenge." Considering that Take Five is one of the few entities that is proposing to do any sort of development here, we would ask that the City Council consider approving this development.
Thank you, sir. Is there a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Oh, you have a question? I'm sorry, there's a, Vice Mayor wanted to ask you a question.
I apologize.
Thank you. Thank you for coming and thank you for your proposal. We've had the opportunity to have another business also want to open particularly at that particular corner, and I know that there has not been a business there for some time. My concern always with when businesses come into the community is whether or not you have met with those neighbors, because there was a really big concern before about noise and that type of thing before. So I question, have you met with the neighbors who live on Cedar Lane and those that are on Elm Avenue to have a conversation about the noise, because that's basically who it's going to directly impact?
I have not. I don't know if our engineer or the representative from Take Five, who are here to answer questions as well, would have any different information on that. And I believe, if I understood correctly, you said that there was another proposed business at that same corner?
Some time ago. So I just want to make sure that, it's always important for me that you, any businesses coming into a community that may have a direct impact upon their quality of life as far as sound and lights and all of that, that you meet with that community to share what your business is and what your plan is, because if they can buy into that, then that helps with making a better decision than just us blanketly making a decision just because it's a business. I strongly support businesses, I strongly support small businesses, but my concern is not just the business, but the residents.
Correct. And what Take Five does is it tries to be part of that community. They do go in, they offer coupons and free car washes to the local community, so I don't know whether or not they have met with any of the local community members. I know that in the past, there was some discussion with local community members when there was a gas station proposal, I believe there was a planned redevelopment of the 711, and there was some conversation with the community at that time, but I'm not familiar with any conversation.
Okay, because that would be the ask. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm not sure if we had a second to the motion. Okay, is there a second to the motion to close the public hearing?
Second.
Okay, call the roll, please.
Thank you.
Any further discussion? If not, call the roll.
Councilman Harris?
Four.
Councilman Jenkins?
Four.
Mayor Price?
Four.
Councilwoman Vick?
Four.
Councilwoman Woodbury?
Four.
Vice Mayor Cherry?
Four.
Motion carried, six to zero.
Is there a motion to adopt the order that switches the motion of denial?
The motion would be to deny the application, if that's what Council wishes to do.
I'll make that motion. Second.
It's moved in second. Any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Councilman Harris?
Four.
Councilman Jenkins?
Four.
Mayor Price?
Four.
Councilwoman Vick?
Four.
Councilwoman Woodbury?
Four.
Vice Mayor Cherry?
Four.
Motion carried, six to zero.
Page 50, item E2 is a request to approve a resolution authorizing the One City, One Future 2040 Comprehensive Plan Amendment, PLN 2022-002, proposing to change the land use designation from medium-density residential to urban residential for a total of 8.73 acres for properties located at 15459 and 15455 Wark Boulevard. The properties under consideration are identified as medium-density residential on the One City, One Future 2040 Comprehensive Plan land use map. The plan amendment recommends urban residential uses for the properties. The proposed urban residential land use designation supports the goal of the Comprehensive Plan to provide a variety of housing types as well as the opportunity to increase ownership. On July 20 of this year, the City Planning Commission voted unanimously eight to zero to recommend adoption of the plan amended PLN 2022-002 to City Council. The city manager also recommends approval. There are no speakers. Is there a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Moved in second.
Any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Councilman Harris?
Four.
Councilman Jenkins?
Four.
Mayor Price?
Four.
Councilwoman Vick?
Four.
Councilwoman Woodbury?
Four.
Vice Mayor Cherry?
Four.
Motion carried, six to zero.
Okay, is there a motion to approve the resolution?
So moved.
Moved in second.
Any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Councilman Harris?
Four.
Councilman Jenkins?
Four.
Mayor Price?
Four.
Councilwoman Vick?
Four.
Councilwoman Woodbury?
Four.
Vice Mayor Cherry?
Four.
Motion carried, six to zero.
Page 65, item E3 is a request to approve a resolution authorizing the One City, One Future 2040 Comprehensive Plan Amendment, Plan 2022-003, proposing to change the land use designation from natural area open space to urban residential for a total of 1.03 acres for property located at 5416 Jefferson Avenue. The properties under consideration are identified as natural open space on the One City, One Future 2040 Comprehensive Plan land use map. The plan amendment recommends urban residential uses for the properties. The Comprehensive Plan states that the city's visual image can be improved through reinvestment that enhances its major corridors. The proposed urban residential land use designation will allow new development that will improve and reshape this part of the corridor. On July 20 of this year, the City Planning Commission voted unanimously eight to zero to recommend adoption of Plan Amendment, Plan 2022-003, to City Council. The city manager also recommends approval. There are no speakers. Is there a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Moved in second.
Call the roll, please.
Councilman Harris?
Four.
Councilman Jenkins?
Four.
Mayor Price?
Four.
Councilwoman Vick?
Four.
Councilwoman Woodbury?
Four.
Vice Mayor Cherry?
Four.
Motion carried, six to zero.
Is there a motion to approve the resolution?
So moved.
Moved in second.
Any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Councilman Harris?
Four.
Councilman Jenkins?
Four.
Mayor Price?
Four.
Councilwoman Vick?
Four.
Councilwoman Woodbury?
Four.
Vice Mayor Cherry?
Four.
Motion carried, six to zero.
Page 80, item E4 is a request to approve a resolution authorizing the One City, One Future 2040 Comprehensive Plan Amendment, Plan 2022-004, proposing to change the land use designation from community to commercial to medium-density residential for a total of 16.67 acres for properties located at 12101 Jefferson Avenue and 128 Jefferson Point Lane. The properties under consideration are identified as community commercial on the One City, One Future 2040 Comprehensive Plan land use map. The plan amendment recommends medium-density residential uses for the properties. The Comprehensive Plan strives to maintain a balanced, economically sustainable mix of land uses throughout the city. The proposed medium-density residential designation supports this goal. On July 20 of this year, the Planning Commission voted unanimously eight to zero to recommend adoption of this plan. The city manager recommends approval. There are no speakers. Is there a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Moved in second.
Call the roll, please.
Councilman Harris?
Four.
Councilman Jenkins?
Four.
Mayor Price?
Four.
Councilwoman Vick?
Four.
Councilwoman Woodbury?
Four.
Vice Mayor Cherry?
Four.
Motion carried, six to zero.
Is there a motion to approve the resolution?
So moved.
Moved in second.
Any discussion?
I have questions, please, just for clarity, if I could, because the zoning would not be changed, but the land use would be changed. So the apartments, the tech centers, apartments, they purchased the land, they purchased that property, and if they wanted to build out, would they have to come back for a zoning change to be?
Correct. They would. If they wanted to build out to the corner, they'd come back for rezoning, yes.
It would have to be rezoned?
Yes.
So right now, if we change the land use, does that help to set that up?
Yes.
Okay, I just want to be clear on that, that the zoning doesn't change from commercial at this point?
At this point, yeah.
And if they wanted to build, they would have to come back?
Correct.
Okay, thank you. Just wanted to be clear. Thank you.
Any further discussion? Call the roll, please.
Councilman Harris?
Four.
Councilman Jenkins?
Four.
Mayor Price?
Four.
Councilwoman Vick?
Four.
Councilwoman Woodbury?
Four.
Vice Mayor Cherry?
Four.
Motion carried, six to zero.
Page 95, item E5 is a request to approve the resolution authorizing the One City, One Future 2040 Comprehensive Plan Amendment, Plan 2022-005, proposing to change the land use designation from Neighborhood Commercial to Low Density Residential for a total of 1.62 acres, the properties located at 210, 212, 214, 216, 218, 220, and 222 City Center Boulevard. The properties under consideration are identified as Neighborhood Commercial on the One City, One Future 2040 Comprehensive Plan land use map. The plan amendment recommends low-density residential uses for these properties. On July 20 of this year, the City Planning Commission voted unanimously eight to zero to recommend adoption of the plan. The city manager also recommends approval. There are no speakers. Is there a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Moved in second.
Call the roll, please.
Mr. Mayor, before, is this the one that one of the property owners indicated he was going to be out of town and asked that this be deferred until he could get back in town to speak to it? Is it?
I didn't.
Yes.
I don't.
So he just wanted to be here? Did he want to?
He objected to the change and wanted to be able to be here, but he had scheduled to be out of town by the time, he didn't, what the letter claimed was he didn't know about it before, when it went before Planning Commission, then just discovered it, wrote a letter, I think a copy of it was sent to the council, indicating that he would be out of town for this meeting and asked that it be deferred so he would have an opportunity to, apparently he and his partners owned some of the land that's going to be changed?
I didn't remember.
One lot? Okay.
It's up to council, what's your plea?
I would like to honor what he's saying to hold off until he can attend the meeting.
So the motion is to defer? Is there a second?
So that would be to the next meeting?
Yes.
I'll second.
Moved in second. Any discussion on the motion?
I just want to ask our Director of Planning, so the letter, because I didn't read the email from Mr. Henderson, so he said he was not aware.
He was aware because we notified him. We notified all the property owners. Planning, plan amendments, you don't necessarily, the ordinance does not require you to notify property owners. We like to notify property owners, so we notified him, and we notified all the owners along that street. The issue with this one is that, and what he said in the letter, is that back when we did the original framework in 1992, he was on one of the task forces and he recommended that this be commercial. What has happened is that there were two lots on that corner that now the city owns, and the city is getting interested in it being residential, and the only way to make it residential is to change the plan, because that commercial exists, because the commercial land use is there, but the city never changed the zoning of this little neighborhood, and it's still residential, including the lot that he owns is still residential. I think ultimately what he would like is to buy all of those lots and eventually make it commercial. And the, you know, the houses are still there, people are still living in them, and people still want it to be residential, so.
Because that wouldn't be a good, it's too close to be a good fit to include residential and commercial?
Well, the residential has always been there. When City Center Boulevard came through, that area did not change, and people assumed that it would change, but it did not change. It remained residential, and it still remains residential to this day.
And so you said, so the notification was for tonight's meeting or the notification that, like when it came before Planning Commission?
Right, the notification that he received was for tonight's meeting.
Okay, so he wasn't aware of it during the discussion of planning?
At Planning Commission.
Okay, so he didn't know that?
Unless he, you know, saw the ad in the paper, he didn't get a personal notification.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Any further discussion? Call the roll, please.
Wait, so what's the motion on the floor?
The motion is still the motion to defer unless someone changes?
To defer the public hearing and to continue the public hearing and defer the action until September, first September meeting.
Right. Councilman Harris?
Four.
Councilman Jenkins?
Four.
Mayor Price?
Four.
Councilwoman Vick?
Four.
Councilwoman Woodbury?
Four.
Vice Mayor Cherry?
I just have one other question before I vote. Mr. Attorney, so if we defer tonight, well, as we go through the vote for tonight, the person that we've got the email from, will he be notified that it's deferred?
Staff is indicating that he will be.
He will be.
He will notify all the property owners, yeah.
Okay, and he'll have an opportunity to come and speak in September? Okay, just one, four, thank you.
Motion carried, six to zero.
Page 110, item E6 is a request to adopt an ordinance authorizing the execution of a deed of easement filed between the City of Newport News, Virginia and Dominion Energy, Virginia, granting a utility easement over city-owned property located at 100 City Farm Road. To accommodate the planned HRSD project, new underground electrical facilities are required to be installed in the city property at 100 City Farm Road to be planned, to a planned transformer location for the Riverview Gymnastics Center. City Council received an open bid for this easement at the July 12 meeting. Virginia Electric and Power Company, or Virginia Electric and Power Company, or now Dominion Energy, Virginia, was successful bidder with this process with a bid of one dollar. The city manager recommends approval. There are no speakers. Is there a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Moved in second. Call the roll, please.
Councilman Harris.
Four.
Councilman Jenkins.
Four.
Mayor Price.
Four.
Councilwoman Vick.
Four.
Councilwoman Woodbury.
Four.
Vice Mayor Cherry.
Four.
Motion carried, six to zero.
Is there a motion to adopt the ordinance?
So moved.
Second.
Moved in second. Any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Councilman Harris.
Four.
Councilman Jenkins.
Four.
Mayor Price.
Four.
Councilwoman Vick.
Four.
Councilwoman Woodbury.
Four.
Vice Mayor Cherry.
Four.
Motion carried, six to zero.
Page one-twenty, item E seven is a request to adopt an ordinance to vacate any interest in a portion of street known as Tilson Drive in the city of Newport News, Virginia. The city has received requests from Hilton MHC LLC to vacate a portion of Tilson Drive, which runs alongside the east side of their property at one-one-one Rivermount Drive. It does not appear that the city took any action to accept this portion of the street for public maintenance. Signage for the street indicates that it is a private drive and further marked with a no trespassing sign. The city staff has received, has reviewed title to the property and has no objection to the request for vacation. The city manager recommends approval. There are no speakers. Is there a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
Moved in second. Call the roll, please.
Councilman Harris.
Four.
Councilman Jenkins.
Four.
Mayor Price.
Four.
Councilwoman Vick.
Four.
Councilwoman Woodbury.
Four.
Vice Mayor Cherry.
Four.
Motion carried, six to zero.
Is there a motion to adopt the ordinance?
So moved.
Second.
Moved in second. Any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Councilman Harris.
Four.
Councilman Jenkins.
Four.
Mayor Price.
Four.
Councilwoman Vick.
Four.
Councilwoman Woodbury.
Four.
Vice Mayor Cherry.
Four.
Motion carried, six to zero.
We are now at the consent agenda. Item F contains the following items. Minutes of the work session of June twenty-eighth. Page one-forty-seven, minutes of the regular meeting of June twenty-eighth. Page one-seventy-four, request to approve a resolution designating the city of Newport News, Virginia as a B-City USA affiliate. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda on items F one through F three, all inclusive?
Mr. Mayor, I think the minutes are for the July twelfth meeting, not the June twenty-eighth meeting. Is that correct?
July twelfth.
He said June twenty-eighth.
Yeah, I did. That's what's here. You're right. July. July twelfth. July twelfth for, for each of those. Thank you.
And I'm so glad to see we are B-City.
Right.
Did we get a second on that? Okay, is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Councilman Harris.
Four.
Councilman Jenkins.
Four.
Mayor Price.
Four.
Councilwoman Vick.
Four.
Councilwoman Woodbury.
Four.
Vice Mayor Cherry.
Four.
Motion carried, six to zero.
We are.
I want to know when we're going to get our honey, though. I know, and I'm not too bad.
We are now at Other City Actions, page one-seventy-nine, item G one. Mr. Manager.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council. Item G one is a request to approve a resolution approving a capital improvements plan for fiscal years twenty twenty-three through twenty twenty-seven for the city of Newport News, Virginia. City manager recommended FY twenty-three twenty-seven capital improvements plan reflects citywide priorities and achieves a responsible balance between the commitment to limit city borrowing and the need to advance critical capital projects and purchases. The plan supports the city's strategic priorities and represents a fiscally responsible strategy that adheres to the city's capital financing and debt management policies adopted by city council in January of two thousand and seven. City council approval will be required to appropriate funds for the projects included in the FY twenty-three twenty-seven plan. City manager recommends approval.
There are no speakers. Is there a motion to approve the resolution?
So moved.
Second.
Moved in second. Any discussion?
I'd just like to say that it's just good being able to see that that our approved plan will, you know, really help us continue to be fiscally sound with our debt burden. The ratio of outstanding debt to assessed value will remain below three percent. General fund debt service will not exceed nine point five percent of combined city and school revenue. Cash capital funding will exceed twenty percent of the plan, and projected debt retirement rates will exceed the adopted goals of thirty percent in the five years. So it's good, and we thank you, Lisa Cipriani and your entire staff for keeping our city fiscally sound.
Any further discussion? Call the roll, please.
Councilman Harris.
Four.
Councilman Jenkins.
Four.
Mayor Price.
Four.
Councilwoman Vick.
Four.
Councilwoman Woodbury.
Four.
Vice Mayor Cherry.
Four.
Motion carried, six to zero.
Page one-thirty-nine, item G two. Mr. Manager.
Item G two is a request to adopt an ordinance to amend ordinance number seven-seven-eight-nine dash two-two to re-adopt the budget and appropriated funds to operate the city of Newport News for the fiscal year beginning July first, twenty twenty-two, and ending June thirtieth, twenty twenty-three inclusive. On May tenth, twenty twenty-two, city council adopted ordinance seven-seven-eight-nine dash two-two enacting the fiscal year twenty twenty-three operating budget. On June twenty-first, twenty twenty-two, the state fiscal year twenty twenty-three through fiscal year twenty twenty-four biennial budget was approved, which included lower state revenue to the school division. City council is requested to amend the fiscal year twenty twenty-three operating budget to reflect a net change of one million nine hundred and thirty-five thousand, three hundred and eighty-seven dollars to the school division. These changes will be amended fiscal year twenty twenty-three, school fund operating budget to thirty-five to three hundred fifty-seven million, four hundred thirty-seven thousand, eight hundred and twenty-three dollars. The amended total city operating budget will be revised to one billion, thirty-nine million, four hundred thirty-eight thousand, and sixty-five dollars. City manager recommends approval.
If there are no speakers, is there a motion to adopt the ordinance?
So moved.
Second.
Moved in second. Any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Councilman Harris.
Four.
Councilman Jenkins.
Four.
Mayor Price.
Four.
Councilwoman Vick.
Four.
Councilwoman Woodbury.
Four.
Vice Mayor Cherry.
Four.
Motion carried, six to zero.
Page two-oh-four, item G three. Mr. Manager.
Item G three is a request for city council to receive and open bids for granting a variable width utility easement and a temporary construction easement over city-owned property located at two-three-nine Denby Boulevard. The proposed ten thousand nine hundred ninety-five square foot variable width utility easement and the sixty-five thousand two hundred sixty-nine square foot temporary construction easement will grant to the successful bidder the right and privilege to lay, construct, operate, and maintain underground wastewater and/or use water reuse force main and gravity mains, including all accessories necessary. There are no, there are no costs to the city. At this time, the mayor will open and announce the bid.
HRSD bid of one dollar.
They've really got to start charging. I mean, they got to pay more than one dollar.
We love hearing those words, Alan. There are no costs to the city. I love those.
We'll try to include those more often.
I think they ought to pay at least five dollars.
Item G four, Mr. Manager.
Item G four is a request to adopt an ordinance to amend and reordain City Code Chapter forty-one, Vehicles for Hire, Article Three, Taxicabs. After careful consideration of the interest of the traveling public and the need for increased flexibility in the taxicab industry, the proposed changes to the taxicab ordinance will maintain public safety while providing the taxicab industry with flexibility to adapt to changing market conditions and better compete with transportation network companies like Uber and Lyft. Major changes from the existing regulations include, but are not limited to, allowing each taxicab company to establish its own rates of fare, elimination of requirements at taxicabs be of uniform color and lettering, elimination of the limitation on the number of certificates issued, and elimination of the taxicab advisory board. The city manager recommends approval.
Okay, I have three speakers listed. Jahad Ali. Good evening.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, honorable council members, city attorney, city manager. I support deregulation of an essential industry. If the public safety is not a concern of our governing body, then what is? Currently, we allow for cabs from Hampton, Norfolk, and New York City to pick up in our city. We even used to advertise for a Norfolk-based cab company on our city-owned website. This type of favoritism and preference needs to stop. By deregulating and defunding an essential industry, you limit the revenue you could be earning like an Airbnb. But increased revenue in a thriving minority-owned industry is not something that our regulating, regulating body have ever supported. If every cab gave the city a dollar for every trip picked up, that would increase the city's revenue by almost two to five million dollars a year. Please keep in mind, you gave away two hundred and thirty-eight thousand dollars for a shared ride taxi system to a company that is not even a taxi and that jeopardizes the lives of our community. Ladies, companies like Uber and Lyft, which are rideshare companies, don't even rideshare in our community because of pandemics, but we gave away money meant for our black-owned businesses to a company to rideshare. What sense does that make? I support deregulation. I don't want to be deregulated by the people that have been regulating us all these years. They do not care about our economy. They do not care about the livelihood and the safety of our drivers. You are about to allow for unmarked cars to pick up downtown Newport News at the devil hours of the morning with no identification on them whatsoever. I'm not going to do that. I'm going to respect the integrity of a taxicab. I'm not worried about Uber and Lyft. I'm worried about localities, listening to people that are highly educated, that advise you of what to do, and you think by deregulating, an essential industry is a good idea. You wouldn't deregulate Airbnb. You wouldn't deregulate your zoning. You guys have never talked about deregulating in this room, but you want to deregulate a thriving, black-owned industry, an essential industry at that. Please be careful what you do. Thank you.
Robert White.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
I'm here to address some of those same issues. Like he said, we do have a new company that was supported by the city with a substantial amount of money to come in and not follow half of the rules that we follow. They are driving with New York City plates on them and New York City tags in the state of Virginia picking up and dropping off, and it's a deal with HRT. So I'm just trying to understand why none of the local transportation companies had the opportunity to do the same thing that you guys did with HRT, a billion-dollar industry.
With HRT?
Yeah. HRT. Yeah, the program.
He's doing a pilot program here in Virginia Beach.
Yeah, so they're breaking, they're not following the laws that you guys set for us, but I'm just trying to understand why is that leaking?
So y'all, you, you, so you mad about?
I'm not mad about anything. I'm just trying to understand. How is it that they can have New York City plates and pick up in the city of Newport News? If we have the regulations, I can't have New York City plates and pick up?
My understanding is not, it's not a taxi. It's, it's a part.
It is. Have you looked at the website? When you, when you type in taxi?
Can I, can I finish my statement?
Okay.
Thank you. My understanding is that this is a subsidiary of public transportation, and they are using vans to pick up localities where public transportation is not there. That was a pilot program as presented to us.
If there are taxis in the city of Newport News, public transportation is there.
I'm just telling how it was presented to us.
Yeah, but that's, that, but it's just like when y'all let Uber and Lyft in here and did anything. It's putting another hurt on our industry.
Well, this is a pilot program.
Understood, but none, none of, none of the local taxi companies, Yellow Cab, Nothin', none of them.
We weren't allowed to bid. Before you put a bid out there, you were supposed to reach out to us to see if we.
We had a whole advisory board and everything.
That, that's a whole different program.
Yeah.
Yeah, but that's what I'm trying to understand. I understand, I understand that.
No, let me talk. That is a whole different program than a taxi, and any city can diversify what type of transportation they want.
You may have figured wrong, man. I mean, I don't mean to say you're wrong, but you are. It's actual, when you guys received that funding?
Excuse me, sir. Excuse me, sir. You are, you are. Thank you.
I, I apologize.
So they're still mad about this, too?
That was kind of rude, but I'm, I'm not here about feelings. But at the end of the day, I'm just trying to understand. There are laws that are set in place, all right? There are laws that the state has for taxicabs, and there's laws that your city has for taxicabs. Ma'am, you're still not understand what I'm saying? This is a company that is picking up in your city with, with your, your community, people from your community with New York City plates on it.
This is a pilot.
Is that not right? Am I wrong?
I've never seen it, so I don't know. But I'm saying it is a pilot program.
I understand, but they're still operating.
For HRT, which is public.
But they're still breaking the law.
It is public.
According to what you guys stated as the law, you're supposed to have the taxis or whatever you're using, registered by the state, interstate, or in the city, right or wrong?
Well, Mr. Attorney, I, I would argue that we're talking about two different modes of transportation.
What we're talking about is essentially an adjunct to the bus service.
Right.
They charge bus fares to get people from places where the buses don't go to bus stops and to areas.
The State House on Jefferson Avenue is not a bus stop.
No, they're not going to.
It's not there.
Like I said, do you, are you even aware that they're running with New York City plates on it? Because I have pictures. I have pictures of this. They have New York plates and they have temporary New York plates. Y'all are allowing something to happen in the city.
We'll be happy to look at it. Thank, thank you, sir, for your comments. We'll be happy to look into that. Thank you.
So rude. That, that.
I'm not trying to be rude. I'm just saying, as the program was presented.
You just told me just to basically shut up. That's not amazing.
Judy, Judy Swiston.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council, Mr. Archer, Mr. Owens. My name's Judy Swiston, and I'm with Yellow Cab Coastal Ride, and I just sent all of y'all an email, and I'm just here to answer any questions if there is any. Nope? Okay. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Those are all the speakers I have. Is there a motion to adopt the ordinance?
So moved.
Second.
We're going to be in discussion. Was there a second?
Yes.
Okay, it's removed in second. Any discussion?
Can Officer Johnson come up? He's with the police department, Lieutenant Johnson, to talk about this taxi ordinance? Thank you.
Good evening, sir, as a man.
Good evening.
What question can I ask?
Can you share, so we, we are trying to, we, and we've been back and forth with this taxicab ordinance. So what we're doing right now, because we've had both sides, and so can you share with us how this?
What we're trying to do?
Yes, please.
Basically, what we're trying to do, Bob Pilo wrote this draft ordinance, and we are taking ourselves out of anything that doesn't have to do with public safety. In the past, we have required them to have certain colors, certain years of cars. They can only be certain ages. They can't be too old. We require them to put meters in them. We require them to put lights on them. We require them to write names on the side. We required them to charge a certain thing per mile, a certain thing per time and distance, a waiting fee. We told them how to run their business. We told them they had to wear collared shirts. We got pretty detailed in the code, and when I say we, I mean the city over the years that's developed the code. And of course, the police department, we enforce what's written. Well, the effort here was to take all that stuff that affects how the business runs out of the code. And what we will look for now is, is your car inspected? Do the brakes work?
Right.
Are there any sharp edges on the outside or inside that would damage a passenger's clothes or luggage? We're looking for safety. I don't care what color your car is. I don't really, it doesn't matter how old it is, as long as it passes the safety inspection and it runs, that's what we're looking for. The other part we kept was the driver piece. We do not want dangerous people, you know, on the sex offender list or previous felons are banned from being cab drivers. That's been in the code for years, and we kept that. We kept the licensing procedure for drivers the same way. We also kept the piece with, if somebody calls a cab, and then when they get to where they're going, they jump out and run off and don't pay, well, we've got that in there that it's a crime. If you use the cab service, you have to pay the cab, and you can be charged with a crime if you skip out on your fare. We kept all that. We kept all that in there to protect the cab owners and give them legal reinsurance so we can go after people that do that. We also left a piece in where we keep the manifest. They don't have to keep paper manifests. They can use electronic, but the manifest, so that way if a citizen has a complaint about a ride and we have to investigate it, we can go back, look at the ride, and the manifest will show where they were picked up, how far they traveled and when they were dropped off and that they were charged the fee they said they charged. And one of the best things about this ordinance is it's going to allow each company to decide what they want to charge. And they pay, they paste the rates in the cab, visible to the passenger. They also have to put the rates on file when they put their certificate on file with the Chief of Police. Now, they can change their rates at any time, but to do that, they have to give them to the Chief of Police and then change all the cards and the different cars they own so that it stays the same. But we do not tell Uber and Lyft how much they charge. We do not tell Uber and Lyft what kind of cars they can use. So by restricting the agent with certain things, we felt it was, in the words of Alan Archer, you didn't give them the flexibility to compete with these other agencies. So what we've done is scaled back the code so that all we're concerned about is, is the car safe? Is the driver safe? And are we to investigate in the event we got a complaint? And that's pretty much all we left in the code. All the stuff about what color car or whether or not you wear a shirt or all that was taken out.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So, so, thank you so much. And so, because I was one of the persons that asked us to go back and revisit it, Ed, I want to say thank you to you all for taking the time to go back through to look at what's on the safety side and the criminal side and then get out of their business. So thank you. I appreciate you taking the time and to do that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any further discussion? Call the roll, please.
Councilman Harris.
Four.
Councilman Jenkins.
Four.
Mayor Price.
Four.
Councilwoman Vick.
Four.
Councilwoman Woodbury.
Four.
Vice Mayor Cherry.
Four.
Motion carried, six to zero.
Page 234, item G5. Mr. Manager.
Item G5 is a request to approve a resolution affirming the City of Newport News' commitment to fund the locality share of projects under agreement with the Virginia Department of Transportation and authorizing the City Manager to execute any and all necessary documents to finalize the projects. City Council's requested to adopt a resolution reaffirming the city's commitment to participate in a 50-50 cost share of projects within the state revenue sharing program and authorizing the City Manager to execute any and all documents necessary to finalize the projects. The purpose of the state's revenue sharing program is to construct or improve the highway systems within a locality with statutory limitations on the amount of state funds authorized per locality. Funding for the projects has been previously appropriated as various capital improvement projects. The City Manager recommends approval.
Okay, there are no speakers. Is there a motion to approve the resolution?
So moved, second.
Moved in second. Any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Councilman Harris.
Four.
Councilman Jenkins.
Four.
Mayor Price.
Four.
Councilwoman Vick.
Four.
Councilwoman Woodbury.
Four.
Vice Mayor Cherry.
Four.
Motion carried, six to zero.
Page 254, item G6. Mr. Manager.
G6 is a request to approve a resolution authorizing and directing the City Manager to execute any and all documents, including deeds necessary to effectuate the conveyance of certain city-owned property at 232, 236, 238, and 323rd Street to the Economic Development Authority of the City of Newport News, Virginia. This transfer will allow the Economic Development Authority to enter into a shared parking agreement with Jim Development. This agreement will allow for additional parking of tenants and customers of the city's 23rd Street Restaurant Row District and accommodate the increasing number of businesses that are planned for this area. The City Manager recommends approval.
There are no speakers. Is there a motion to approve the resolution?
So moved, second.
Moved in second. Any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Councilman Harris.
Four.
Councilman Jenkins.
Four.
Mayor Price.
Four.
Councilwoman Vick.
Four.
Councilwoman Woodbury.
Four.
Vice Mayor Cherry.
Four.
Motion carried, six to zero.
Item G7. Mr. Manager.
Item G7 is one of two in a request to approve a resolution authorizing and directing the City Manager to execute the Commonwealth's Development Opportunity Fund, First Amendment to Performance Agreement by and among the City of Newport News, Virginia, S-23 Holdings LLC, the Virginia Economic Development Partnership Authority, and the Economic Development Authority of the City of Newport News, Virginia. S-23 Holdings LLC has been making significant progress toward its anticipated capital investment and job creation targets. S-23 initially was awarded $664,000 in funding from the Commonwealth's Development Opportunity Fund as an incentive for public infrastructure and intersection improvements along Terminal Avenue and supporting connectivity to Terminal Avenue and the planned investment at Harbor Lane. It was determined that the anticipated improvements were not eligible for the Economic Development Access Program. Therefore, the Virginia Economic Development Partnership Authority increased the fund award by $650,000 to support the infrastructure improvements on Terminal Avenue. An amendment to the performance agreement by $650,000 in funding from the Commonwealth is requested. The City Manager recommends approval.
Okay, there are no speakers. Is there a motion to approve the resolution?
So moved, but I do have a question.
Second.
So the, the $664,000, is that, am I understanding this correct? Comes from where? The state or local?
The state.
The state. The Opportunity Fund.
It comes from the state?
Yes.
Through us?
Yes. And, and so Derek Perry is here this evening as well from the Department of Economic Development. Derek, would you like to speak to this issue?
So the $664,000 comes from the state. There is a portion of the incentive package of the $650,000 was supposed to come from another state program. The anticipated improvements to be used to fund from those dollars were determined to be ineligible. So recognizing the commitment that was included to support the company, Virginia Economic Development Partnership, made available $650,000 to make up for those funds that weren't able to be used.
So that's worth-
But all of that funding, the $664,000 and the $650,000 are both state funds.
It's not local, nothing-
Correct.
Oh, it's local. Thank you.
Any further discussion?
Thank you, state.
Call the roll, please.
Councilman Harris.
Four.
Councilman Jenkins.
Four.
Mayor Price.
Four.
Councilwoman Vick.
Four.
Councilwoman Woodbury.
Four.
Vice Mayor Cherry.
Four.
Motion carried, six to zero.
Page 261, item G8. Mr. Manager.
Item G8 is item two of two. This is a request to approve a resolution appropriating the additional $650,000 from the Commonwealth's Development Opportunity Fund grant supporting S-23 Holdings LLC. This is the second City Council item related to the S-23 Holdings LLC project. To support its expansion project, S-23 was initially awarded $664,000 in funding from the Commonwealth's Development Opportunity Fund as an incentive supporting public infrastructure and intersection improvements along Terminal Avenue as planned investment at Terminal Avenue and Harbor Lane. It was determined that the anticipated improvements were not eligible for Economic Development Access Program. Therefore, the Virginia Economic Development Partnership Authority increased the fund award by $650,000 to support the infrastructure improvements on Terminal Avenue. An appropriation of $650,000 in grant funding provided by the Commonwealth is requested. The City Manager recommends approval.
Again, there are no speakers. Is there a motion to approve the resolution?
So moved, second.
Moved in second. Any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Councilman Harris.
Four.
Councilman Jenkins.
Four.
Mayor Price.
Four.
Councilwoman Vick.
Four.
Councilwoman Woodbury.
Four.
Vice Mayor Cherry.
Four.
Motion carried, six to zero.
Page 264, item G9. Mr. Manager.
Item G9 is a request to adopt an ordinance to amend and reordain City Code, Chapter 15.1, Fair Housing. The City Manager recommends approval.
There are no speakers. Is there a motion to adopt the ordinance?
So moved.
Second.
Moved in second. Any discussion?
I'd like to say thank you to Mr. Attorney and your staff for working on that because this and the second one that we're going to vote on were concerns of the Human Rights Commission. So thank you so much for your staff for working on that.
We emailed copies of these to the Chairman and the Commission a couple of weeks ago, so-
I appreciate that. Thank you so much.
Call the roll, please.
Councilman Harris.
Four.
Councilman Jenkins.
Four.
Mayor Price.
Four.
Councilwoman Vick.
Four.
Councilwoman Woodbury.
Four.
Vice Mayor Cherry.
Four.
Motion carried, six to zero.
Page 281, item G10. Mr. Manager.
Item G10 is a request to adopt an ordinance to amend and reordain City Code, Chapter 21.1, Human Rights. Includes Section 21.1-1 Declaration Policy, Section 21.1-2 Unlawful Discriminatory Practice Defined, Section 21.1-3 Construction of Chapter, Other Programs to Aid Persons with Disabilities, Minors, and the Elderly. The City Manager recommends approval.
Again, no speakers. Is there a motion to adopt the ordinance?
So moved, second.
It's moved in second. Any discussion?
Yeah, I, I do. What, what has been the policy? I mean, is this dynamically different?
The state code, there were some significant changes to the state code about two years ago. And we did not make those changes at the time. So we picked them up now. When we looked around the area, we realized none of the other localities around here had made the changes either. So really, we're the first ones around here to do it. Northern Virginia localities have done it, but we're sort of the first around.
We are very progressive. Thank you.
Call the roll, please.
Councilman Harris.
Four.
Councilman Jenkins.
Four.
Mayor Price.
Four.
Councilwoman Vick.
Four.
Councilwoman Woodbury.
Four.
Vice Mayor Cherry.
Four.
Motion carried, six to zero.
Page 285, the last G, 11. Mr. Manager.
Item G11 is a request to adopt an ordinance to amend and reordain City Code, Chapter 34, Human Services. Article 1, in general, Section 34-4, Designation and Duties of Local Board or Public Welfare. Article 2, Human Services Advisory Board, Social Services Advisory Board, Section 34-21, General Function, and Section 34-22, Powers and Duties. The City Manager recommends approval.
Are there no speakers? Is there a motion to adopt the ordinance?
So moved.
Second.
Moved in second. Any discuss-
But I have a question, yes.
Okay, we're at discussions.
We were sort of antiquated when we still called it a welfare board and the state code calls it something different.
Call the roll, please.
Councilman Harris.
Four.
Councilman Jenkins.
Four.
Mayor Price.
Four.
Councilwoman Vick.
Four.
Councilwoman Woodbury.
Four.
Vice Mayor Cherry.
Four.
Motion carried, six to zero.
We are now at appropriations, page 289, item H. Mr. Manager.
Item H1 is a request to approve a resolution appropriating $333,000 and $333,046 for fiscal year 2023 Virginia Department of Transportation Congestion Mitigation and Air Quality Program Funds for the Newport News Signal Timing Improvements Project in the amount of $100,000 and for the Newport News Transportation Center Station Platform Parking Lot Project in the amount of $233,046. There are surplus funds, surplus funds, Virginia Department of Transportation Congestion Mitigation Air Quality Grant Funds from completed projects in the Hampton Roads region that can be used and have been granted to the City of Newport News for these two projects. City Council's requested to approve a resolution of the appropriation of $100,000 of CMAC funds for the Newport News Signal Timing Improvements Project and $233,046 for the Newport News Transportation Center Station Platform Parking Lot Project. The CMAC program is 80% federal grant, 20% state grant, and 0, 0% local funded. The City Manager recommends approval.
Okay, is there a motion to approve items H1 through H3 all-inclusive?
So moved, second.
Moved in second. Any discussion?
Yes, I would just like to say how important it is and how it's going to make my marriage better, that we're going to have timed lights because my husband screams about it all the time. So I think that is a real progress and I, I thank you all.
Any further discussion? Call the roll, please.
Councilman Harris.
Four.
Councilman Jenkins.
Four.
Mayor Price.
Four.
Councilwoman Vick.
Four.
Councilwoman Woodbury.
Four.
Vice Mayor Cherry.
Four.
Motion carried, six to zero.
We are now at citizen comments. Those that are dermained to the business of council. First speaker is Miguel Ortiz Cruz.
Hello, my name's Miguel. Hello, all.
Hello.
Um, I have conflicted, oh.
I'm sorry, excuse me, Mr. Mayor. I believe we have two other appropriations.
Yeah, they were all-
They're all one-
Altogether.
I just wanted to make sure.
Thank you, thank you.
Absolutely. No problem. Continue, sir.
So, hello, all. I have mixed feelings as of this meeting. I looked over the comprehensive plan and the future, well, the comprehensive plan that y'all were referencing earlier, the 240-page one, and then the future zoning map that y'all have created for 2040. Can y'all, can y'all hear me? Am I clear?
Just barely. Can you get closer?
Get closer, yeah.
Can y'all hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
All right. I was looking at the comprehensive plan, the 240-page one, and the comprehensive map for 2040. I do have conflicted feelings about the progress of the planning of this city, though I am a resident of about two years, and I am not that well-versed into city, into urban planning. There are, there have been books such as Strong Towns that came out three years ago, and then a couple of content creators on YouTube that focus on city planning. I, I'm a little disappointed as that there's not much improvement in terms of expanding on mixed-use zoning and the cab from, the cab company from earlier. This is a little awkward. But in reducing car dependency in the city, we'd probably see, how you say, profits in terms of what the city has available, or the funds that the city has available into maintaining areas that matter in terms of, well, maintenance. It's a garbled mess, I know, but that, that's it. Yeah.
So you're just disappointed with the planning?
I am disappointed in the planning in that, I'm not leaning on this, I'll just speak louder. I am disappointed in the planning that when I overlaid the 2040 plan on top of the current zoning that y'all have in your ArcGIS map, it's the exact same, it's not the exact same. It's mostly the same except for two or three spots in the lower parts of the city where there is community, how you say, community centers. I would have liked to see more. I would have liked to seen a reduction in single-family zoning and an increase in mixed-use zoning. And that's where my emotions stem from.
Thank you.
Excuse me, can I ask you a question?
Sure.
Have you ever signed up for a particular board with the city to have input?
I just got here, as of a couple, like as a year and a couple of months ago.
Have you been on the website to see that you could, as a citizen, join some of these committees and have input directly with them?
No, and I will reiterate because I just got here.
Yeah, I know, I know that. But I'm just saying what's open to you.
Right.
And I hope you'll take advantage of it.
I haven't looked there yet, so. What was it called again?
It's city boards and commissions that you can have input as a citizen.
Right.
To some of the areas of your interest.
All right.
And the planning and zoning meetings are all open to the public as well, where you can express yourself.
Does this count? Is this one of those meetings?
This counts, but they usually do the work and recommend to us. So if you want input, it's better to do it at that level.
All right, I'll watch the stream later so I can gather that information.
Thank you, sir.
Get on the website and look at boards and commissions.
All right.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Darlene Walker. I think I'm supposed to give my address, 110 Boeing Avenue, Hampton. And I'm here representing the National Black Child Development Institute. I am super happy to be here with you guys today, and I thank you all for your support of our April event. It was stupendous, and we just truly enjoyed it. But I do thank you all for your support. We are here to support our students throughout Newport News. You all have in your possession, I think, already, books, just a sample of the types of books that we give to our preschool children. We are covering our whole preschool program for Newport News. So all of the preschool programs are under our care, as well as our Head Start program. And the Head Start program covers Newport News Peninsula area as well as the South Side. And so we are supporting both in the way of just making sure that our children are getting the reading materials that they need to be able to take home. And that's mostly our push, I should say, in reference to boosting literacy and parent engagement. And so with that being said, you have the books so that you can give them to some of your smallest little friends and just share those. But I wanted to be sure you had an example of what we're giving out in the community to all children. And so also the program booklet from our event in April, that's there for you just to kind of see where we were at that time. And just to thank you guys again for your support.
Thank you so much.
Any questions about any of that?
Yes, I have a question. Do you have folks that read these to the children regularly? Or do you count on the parents reading them to them?
We count on the parents to read those to the children. Prior to the pandemic, we were having parenting workshops where we're engaging with parents to let them know the importance, not so much the importance of literacy because they know that, but just giving them a little bit of a boost to be able to do different things with their children to push that literacy piece. Our children right now, well, should say before the pandemic, they were already reading at a low level overall for Newport News Hampton area. And so they're good in their preschool years up until about first grade. But from first grade to third grade, reading scores really fall. And so what we want to do is to make sure what you learned as a little, little wee one in pre-K, that you continue on with that. And so we find that books are what's needed. You know, in this timeframe, parents are having a hard time just keeping food on the table, you know, roof over your head, as well as nail gas. So books are not the first thing on the list, you know, to buy children, as well as the fact that books are a little bit higher.
But I would recommend to you that you start your parenting groups again because sometimes the parents need the incentive. And sometimes they need to be able to read themselves.
They definitely do. And that's our, that's on the map for us coming with the start of this new school year. So we're on track for that. Like I said, supporting Head Start and Newport News Public Schools, the whole of our preschool program.
Thanks.
But I want to just say, Darlene, I'm glad to know you as a person and to also serve on the board. But the gala was so successful. We, not only for the actual event, but you, I'm shocked that you didn't tell that Hampton Roads BCDI was selected as the Affiliate of the Year. That we've done so much work because Darlene works us like, like she's paying us. And so we've been selected as the Affiliate of the Year. Also, the gala was, all the tickets sold, but the fact that we got recognition from the national president out of Atlanta. Actually, she was there.
Yeah.
Leah.
As our guest speaker.
As our guest speaker. And the fact that already the people in DC and Atlanta are gearing up to, because they heard about the greatness of the gala, that they're gearing up to come this year.
Yes. They want to come and hang out with us a little bit more for the next event. So we're really happy about that and the work that we're doing. We're going to keep on working for our children. And with you guys continuing to support us, we know we're going to be successful in all of that.
Right. So everybody has to come to the gala next year, if you can, because to be able to have a gala, and it was so good that people from the national office were calling Darlene to tell her they heard about it and they're wanting to get tickets for next year. So job well done.
Thank you so much. And thank you, council, for your vote to just continue on supporting us. Call on us if you need us.
Thank you.
I wanted to say thank you also for the wonderful gifts of the books. I think that's so great. And for all the work that you all do with the Black Child Development Institute. You have, you've already done well in the community, and we wish you well. Please let us know how we can help you in getting the books out to the children as well. That's great. I want to say thank you so much.
Will do, Vice Mayor. Thank you so much. And thank you again, you guys, for your support.
Thank you.
All right.
I'm so glad Pam is back.
Good evening.
I miss it when you don't come and speak.
Y'all don't miss me. Good evening, everybody. I'm Pam Hall, and I live in the southeast community. We, the people in the southeast community, are still against the land swap moving Huntington Middle School to the property where Doris Miller sits. Where is the democratic transparent government of which you speak? When will the signage be put up at the site? I still would like to see the study which shows the impact of no community center in the southeast community for at least three years, as Huntington is to be the first building erected in the southeast community resource area. Since our voices go unheard, hopefully, they will be heard at the ballot box. Thank you.
I don't know how I'm going to follow that. That's a tough act. Our elders are hurting. It's coming from their heart. I have in front of me the master plan that was adopted December 2021. The master plan, when you read it, it goes in detail how long y'all been working to knock down the legacy of the east end of Newport News, especially Huntington High School. All four high schools have been shut down since 1971, when we talk about Pembroke, Phoenix, Calva, as well as Huntington. So it's a shame that you waited until our elders are too old to fight, done built the world. Some kind of way, they are erasing our history. I don't know what to say, but it's a shame. And think about that when you go to the ballot. For whatever reason, they have opened the 1810 Courthouse in Ward County, Virginia. Sometimes people forget their heritage. So I had a wonderful time listening to you, Mr. Jenkins, as you talked about your family from the east end that had that grocery store. And if you just read and put the dots together, it's just common sense at this point. I want to say, B2, you look good up there. It's your mother's birthday. We talked about her, Aunt DeeDee. I was with Marion Kirby as we honored her in April, just so that we can continue to talk about the history so that we don't forget that Aunt Thama DeeDee is in the cemetery up on Ward Boulevard and that we owe our ancestors and our elders to participate in this Ward County Historical Society so that we can keep the legacy of our ancestors. I didn't come to talk about that. I had a few announcements. I want to thank all the council members that came to the Scott Center to participate in the air monitor and transmitter program. Lost for words because I'm still so upset about Huntington. All our ancestors went to Huntington, and elders that's here now all went to Huntington. And as you look at, please get a copy of the master plan and read it. It was adopted December 2021. We know our elders been fighting this fight for our land. June Mears brought me here 29 years ago when they rezoned all his commercial property and made it residential. He fought till the bitter end. We still fighting. It makes no sense. I don't understand how Hilton is historical, how Aberdeen is historical, and how the east end is still not historical, and y'all still knocking our buildings down. We need to think about things. One announcement, August 16 through the 21st, we will be in Santa Fe, New Mexico. I will be presenting this same case, talking about our ancestors, ready for a tour to take our history back. Over 500 years, Gregory Cherry did a great job. If you look at the Contraband Society right now, they're telling the story of the James Field House. Uh, James Field House is the son of David Harris.
Ms. Harris, I hate the interruption.
So be kind to everyone. Teach your children about their history.
Thank you, Ms. Harris.
And Mayor Kim Lee Price, don't forget that you are Mr. Pooh's grandchild.
Thank you, ma'am. Okay, those are all the speakers I have. We're now at new business. Mr. Manager.
Mr. Mayor, members of city council, I would just like to extend my appreciation to the police department, to all the members of the Taxi Cab Advisory Board, and those who have worked closely with the taxi cab issue here in the City of Newport knows over many years. I want to thank you for your support of the new taxi cab amendment that was approved this evening. And this definitely marks a change in the way that our police department enforces the taxi cab industry. And I believe that it will, it will welcome a new era in terms of policing resources, how they are utilized, and also doing so while maintaining the trialling public's best interest, that is, to keep them safe. Thank you.
Mr. Attorney.
Nothing, sir.
Madam Clerk. Councilwoman Vick.
I just want to agree with what you just said, in reference to what we passed tonight because this issue was going on so long. And the thing is, every time there was a meeting, there's another issue. But I did want to just clarify that that HRT project is totally different than the taxi cab issues. And the fact that a city has a right to have a variety of transportation, transportation instead of just one. We can't just have one thing. So I'm glad it passed tonight. It was something that was much needed. And so thanks to city council for being able to support that so that our city can move forward. Also, I wanted to say thank you to all of the city staff, David Freeman, Flora, everybody who was a part of the, on Thursday, July 28, the Virginia Peninsula Association of Realtors Tour that we had of the southeast community, the Lower Southeast Community. Really, Susan Gaston and I, who was the lobbyist for the Realtors, had talked three years ago about wanting to, because there have been so many changes and so many new things voted on in the Lower Southeast section, that we wanted to do a tour. But then here comes COVID, and we had to cancel. But now to have been able to work with the staff and everyone who played a part in getting it organized, everyone probably can agree that, that was one, David is back there smiling. That was one of the best tours. And I felt so good that, because we had invited city leaders, our school board, our Economic Development Authority, as well as our Planning Commission, along with the Realtors, to be able to see the changes and the excitement of what's going on. And so we had a full day. We were able to enjoy all of the, our Magruder, well, not Magruder, Discovery STEM, our Discovery STEM School. We started out at Downey Grove. We were able to showcase that. Our Lord Jefferson Avenue Corridor, our Ridley Circle, explaining what's going on with Ridley Circle, King Lincoln Park. They were so impressed with our offices of 2, 5, and J. That was really good to be able to showcase that and still getting people calling me about that. And also our Brooks Crossing Innovation and Opportunity Center. And to go over to end the day at the Coastal Fermentary. Is that, is that, am I saying it right? Fermentary. Okay, thank you for that. The Coastal Fermentary and the Bourbon Distillery, that's where we ended. So many Realtors said that we should have stayed a little bit longer at that place. But hey, we were running out of time.
Well, what did you do there?
Toward, toward the place.
Yes.
And so that was just excellent. And thank you all for the hard work. Still getting calls about how exciting they were and how they really want to because our goal now is to not just do southeast, but to really go throughout our city to just look at some of the things we actually vote on, some of the things the Planning Commission votes on, the EDA, and just be able to have a look at how things are coming together in our city. And to not just look at the things that are working well, but some of the things we also need to continue to work on to help improve our city for the lives of our citizens. So thank you again. And my last thing, I want to say congratulations to Mr. John Ealy with the What's Next program and Dr. Kiel Gore. They have really been working hard with the Virginia Peninsula Association, I'm sorry, Virginia Peninsula Community College. Because Virginia Peninsula Community College, they have some programs to help people get to work that includes CDL training, which has been one of the top topics that the young students want to train in, phobotomy, CNA, and welding, just to name a few. So they've connected and formed this partnership. The last Monday that I went out there just to see how things were going, there were 400, and over 400 people in line there to sign up for the program. And that lets people know, and we could see then that sometimes people can say, well, these people don't want to do anything or that group doesn't want to do anything. But it showed that if you get the word out there and there's a viable program, that people will come to want to train. And so even yesterday, there were another 300 people wanting to sign up. So I want to say congratulations to John Ealy for the What's Next. So I want to say congratulations to John Ely for the What's Next, and I also want to thank him, John Ely, and Dr. Terry Best for also being, assisting with our tour guiding in the neighborhoods on, on July 28th, on that Thursday for the tour. And that's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Councilwoman Woodbury.
Well, I only have one word: transformation. That's what we're seeing in the Southeast Community, and that's what I'm assuming we're going to continue to see throughout our city. And I thank the City Council for being forward-thinking and for making sure, and our city manager in particular, to make sure that all through our city, there will be transformation and all citizens involved. And I invite you, young man, to be part of that. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Cherry.
Thank you so much. I'd like to thank everyone who joined us tonight and those who are watching online, rather than to repeat everything, but because we only meet once in Ju- July and in August, a lot of things have happened that I want to make sure that the community at large is aware of. And our tagline is, great things are happening at Newport News and continue to happen. And I do want to say thank you to Avelo, a new airline that has come to the city of Newport News. Yay. While, while you can, I think you can get a trip for $29 to Orlando, Florida, or Fort Lauderdale or somewhere south.
My husband says he thinks the seats will be in the baggage department.
That's, but it's, it's brand new, so we are excited about Avelo joining us at, at Patrick Henry Airport, Newport News Williams. We are happy and excited about that. Great things are happening. I was excited to be a part of the HRSD Swift Groundbreaking. We're thankful for that, to be out there at Riverview Farm Park. We know that they have a great plan to bring some walking trails and things along the River Walk, River down at Riverview Farm Park. So that was exciting, and the plan is visible, and, and you're able to see it if you're interested to know where the trails are going to be. You, you should be able to get that off of the HRSD website. Congratulations to the Eccleson Wellness Center. We know that Eccleson has been around since the Sarah, the, what was it, Sarah Hudgens, right? And so they've moved to J. Claude Morris Boulevard, and I encourage you to, Bon, Bonwell. Yeah, I encourage you to go over to, to J. Claude Morris Boulevard and stop in to see their, their brand-new wellness center. It's absolutely beautiful. And we know that Eccleson works with individuals who have disabilities, but is, they have a gymnasium and so much to offer our adults that have some type of disability, and they're wanting to come out into the community to work. Whereas other folks don't want to work, we're thankful for this particular organization that teaches them the skill and training to be able to be a part of the workforce. I'm sorry, Chief Johnson left, but I'm excited because they had their youth, their first youth fire camp graduates. And that was exciting to see individuals, those young people who are from, they partnered with an Achievable Dream Middle School to have this first youth fire camp, and they're going, we had at least three of them to say that they want to become firefighters. So we have to start young in order to get their interest, so that was a great opportunity. Congratulations to Councilman Harris. They had a summer RE program, believe it was for middle school students, and it was very, very successful. So want to say thank you to that. I think your last week was last week or this week, so it was a great program, so I do want to thank you for that. And the Newport News Public Schools had their retirees banquet. Some people had worked for the school system for more than 40 years. That's exceptional. And while we were shaking their hands, I was saying, HR is outside, so you can sign up again to come back. Some of them said no, but especially our elementary stu-, teachers and things like that, but it was just great. I say congratulations to all of them. And thank you to all, to the Newport News Police Department and all of the Neighborhood Watch groups that hosted National Night Out. We had a fantastic time being out in the community. It was really good to have the opening ceremony or program at the Police Department. It was well-attended. So we want to say thank you to the Police Department, and it was a great opportunity to get out into the community and meet with neighbors and eat some food and, and fellowships. I wanted to say thank you to all of you. We will have the Your Voice Matters South District Town Hall meeting on Thursday, August 11th, at the Midtown Community Center. It will be a conversation around traffic calming, but it will also be an ice cream social. So we invite all the residents that are in the South District to please, or anybody from the city can definitely come. But also, we will have the Your Voice Matters South District Town Hall meeting on next Thursday, August 18th. And we will have an ice cream social at that event as well. So I want to say thank you to all of you, and I hope that you will have the rest of the summer. We will have our back-to-school community fall fest, community fest on August 20th, that's Saturday, August 20th, from 1:00 to 3:00 PM at King Lincoln Park. So if any of you have children, we invite you to please come down to the park, and we will have school supplies for all of our children. Thank you so much, and have a good summer.
Can we come just for the ice cream?
You can come just for the ice cream. Yes, that's going to be the fun part, with plenty of toppings as well. Thank you.
Councilman Harris.
And good evening to everyone, and thanks for everyone who came and shared on tonight. First, want to send my condolences to the family of two phenomenal educators and coaches that were with us here in the City of Newport News. First, Thomas Swords, Coach Thomas Swords. He was a phenomenal, phenomenal English teacher that I had an opportunity to work with years ago. And he was also the head basketball coach at Denby High School for a few years. He passed away, and they had his memorial service last week. And then I also want to send my condolences to the family of Coach Gideon Moore, who was also a, a basketball coach who coached at Warwick High School. We lost these, these incredible gentlemen that served the young people here in our community. Their impact was felt, will be felt for generations to come because of all that they've done and imparted in so many that were able to, to be in their classroom or just be on their basketball team. And just to hear some of those young men talk about them as they memorialize them, it was, uh, it was heartfelt, and it was also encouraging to know that they left such a lasting impact with the way they lived their life and the way they poured into so many within our city here in Newport News. As Dr. Cherry, Vice Mayor Cherry said, we had a summer reading program, which she didn't say. She was one of our facilitators for the program. So we thank you for sharing the amazing poem that you read with our young people that was so impactful, so we thank you for that. I also want to congratulate all of our summer grads at Newport News Public Schools. We had a summer graduation that took place last week. And what I find so powerful about it, because those kids could have gave up, but they kept pushing, and, and they got it done, and they walked across the stage with their diploma. So we want to acknowledge all of our summer grads, just like we acknowledge those that graduated in June. So congratulations to each and every one of you. And finally, I do want to wish all of our students, because I think next time we meet, school will have started. So I want to wish all of our students that'll be starting school a little earlier this year, August 29th, a great school year. Safe, fun, exciting school year to all of our educators that are in the process of going back. I just want to make sure you understand, we appreciate all the work that you continue to do. And we know it's not as, it's, it's still some challenges that we're still trying to overcome when it comes to education, but we just want to be appreciative of what you guys do. And then we also want to make sure our young people know that we're going to continue to be here for them and have a great school year. And that's all I have, Mayor Price.
Thank you. Councilman Jenkins.
Uh, nothing this evening.
Thank you. I want to try one more time with, with Huntington High School and Huntington Middle School. People blast us and leave and do not wait for a response. We were just told today that all of the programs that are at Doris Miller will be moved to other localities during the construction phase. So those programs will be taken care of. Anything that's going on now at Doris Miller will be moved to other locations while construction. The second thing, I didn't attend the dinner because I was out of town, but the annual banquet that Huntington Reunion Alumni give at King Lincoln Park, cars all over the place.
Yes.
Hundreds of people out there. All I got was compliments about the plan.
That's it.
That's, everybody that come, oh, man, the plan is great. If people would look at the plan, they would understand that we get a brand-new middle school, and we keep the 1935 portion of the Huntington High School. If the school was placed where people are asking for it, or two people are asking for it, that would be torn down. Let me say that again. If the school is built in the original site, the old part of Huntington would be torn down. We are keeping that. It will be a museum. It will be part of the new library. It will lead into the new recreation center and to the indoor swimming pool. Look at the plan. And as far as my history, that was mentioned about my great-great-grandfather, who I am well aware of, who founded the first form of organized religion in Newport News. So I am aware of that history as well. So the thing that I do want to, unfortunately, my last annual mayor's ball, baseball event will be postponed. There is a 60% chance of lightning and thunderstorms, and we don't want the kids out there in danger. But it will be moved to next Wednesday, the 17th. So if you were planning to come tomorrow, don't, but show up on the 17th. We're going to have lots of fun, as we usually do. Chief Drew is out there playing in that uniform. I don't know how he does it every year out there, because it's the hottest day of the year, every year. But please, please make sure that you scratch that for tomorrow, but it will be August 17th from 5:00 to 8:00. And we invite everyone at the Town Bank Athletic Park, it's at 741 Adams Drive. We usually have food trucks out there. We give away hot dogs. We have dancing. The kids get to play baseball. And this is, this is done through the U.S. Conference of Mayors and Major League Baseball to try and get kids back interested in baseball, something that minorities used to not dominate, but have a large part in, have dwindled through the years, and they're trying to increase people's awareness of, of baseball as a career. So with that, if there's nothing else, and I'm sure there will be.
I usually don't do this. I usually, this is my first time in, in 14 years I've been on the council. But we forgot, nobody said anything about the gun violence announcement today.
Oh, yes, you're right.
Oh, my God, it was so well-attended, and I don't know about you, Mayor Price, and Vice Mayor, Councilman Jenkins was there. But I, couldn't you feel in the room that those people were ready to work?
Yep.
They are ready to work, and your speech was Gray Allen, your speech, Dr. Kiel Gore, what's the other young man that, Cameron.
Cameron.
But, but to know that these grants have come down, and Alan has worked so hard to be able to get them to these organizations. But that room was standing room only. You could feel in the room the spirit, the people are ready to work, to do what everyone can to, to decrease or, or slash eliminate this gun violence in our city, the ugliness of the violence. We, we are committed to working hard to get rid of it. So it was just a wonderful day. My spirit is still high from just being in the room. People could not stop taking pictures. Whoever decided about that Newport News background, it was a hit. Everybody could, nobody did, nobody wanted to leave.
That would be our Communications Department. Thank you.
Oh, thank you for the Communications Department for that. But the last thing, too, I have to wish my daughter a happy 37th birthday. Tiansheng will be 37 on August 11th. So happy birthday to my baby girl, and thank you.
Thank you. And, and I just want to piggyback, and thanks for reminding us that, you know, we, we gave 1.7 million in grants to 19 agencies that will be working with our youth about mental health, prevention of gun violence, all types of attitude changes. We thanked a lot of people, and I think we didn't thank enough, the, our legislators who fought for this funding as well for us. And, and my favorite legislator, Marcia Price, did a tremendous work in trying to get grants for us to have this money available for reduction of gun violence, and I want to thank her for that, and I'm sorry I didn't mention that early today. But the Justice Department had people there. We had legislators there. We had school board. And, and the two speakers that you talked about, and, and Alan also doing a tremendous job of getting, pulling all that together. It was just, as you said, a great event today and, and actually a highlight of today. So we're looking forward to these people who are doing the work, now having some additional resources to continue to do that, so that we can make, as I stated today, violence is, is something that's preventable. We, we can prevent this with enough people caring and giving hope back to our kids. And that's, to me, is a critical issue, that kids who go down that path just have no hope. And we're seeing now with increased employment, increased funding, increased resources, and helping mental health, that these attitudes in our, our neighborhoods will change, such that kids will see that they have, they have a future, and that's what it's about. So thank you all. If there's nothing else, may what you say and do uplift the City of Newport News. We stand adjourned.